Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Regular Meeting of Tuesday, October 1st, 2019. My name is Louise Chris and with us today is Nick Miller, our Sign Language Interpreter. The following is a list of legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Councilman Reverend Ricky V. Burgess presents Bill 2109, Resolution Amending Resolution 762 of 2018 which authorized the Director of Finance to enter into a contract or agreement or the use of existing contract or agreement with the Pittsburgh Community Reinvestment Group for the purpose of annual analysis of community reinvestment of possible city depositories and other associated work. The contract period was originally November 1st to December 31st, 2018, renewable annually for three years by a mutual agreement of the parties at $25,000 for each year of service. Bill 2110, Resolution Further Amending Resolution 855 of 2011 by reducing children's museum by 4,000 and increasing women's center and shelter by 4,000 and authorizing a subsequent agreement or agreements for operation/ administrative expenses, maintenance, purchase of equipment and/or rehabilitation of neighborhood facilities on behalf of the residents of the city of Bill 2111, Resolution Further Amending Resolution 797 of 2017 by reducing CDBG personnel by $10,000 and increasing women's center and shelter by $10,000 and authorizing a subsequent agreement or agreements for operation/ administrative expenses, maintenance, purchase of equipment and/or rehabilitation of neighborhood facilities on behalf of the residents of the city of Pittsburgh. Councilwoman Deborah L. Gross presents Bill 2112, Resolution Providing for the Pittsburgh City Council to authorize the Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh to execute all necessary agreements between the City of Pittsburgh and the Pennsylvania State Historic Preservation Office as may be required for renewed participation in the Certified Local Government Program. Bill 2113, Resolution Amending Resolution 534 of 2018 entitled, "Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Contract or the Use of Existing Agreements and Contracts with the Urban Design Ventures for the Purpose of Assisting the City in Preparing Environmental Review Resulting from the Audit Conducted by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and Provide for the Payment of the Costs Thereof Not to Exceed $20,000 by Increasing the Amount Authorized to $48,000." Councilwoman Darlene M. Harris presents Bill 2114, Resolution Amending Resolution 742 of 2017 which authorized the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional service agreement with the PNA Group for Services Relating to the Administration of the City of Pittsburgh's Consolidated Omnibus Budget Reconciliation Acts (COBRA) program by increasing the authorized spending amount by $90,000. Bill 2115, Resolution Providing that the City of Pittsburgh enter into a memorandum of agreements and/or contracts with the Corporation for National and Community Services for the purpose of attaining AmeriCorps Visa members' work with staff from the City Departments and the Housing Authority City of Pittsburgh on strategic projects and research for a sum not to exceed $72,000 over three years and for the payment of the costs thereof. Councilman R. Daniel Lovell presents Bill 2116, Resolution Providing for the Issuement of a warrant in favor of Shaw Creek Kennels and the amount of $8,000 for the purchase of canine for the Department of Public Safety Bureau of Police. Councilman Corey O'Connor presents 2117, Resolution Amending Resolution 42 of 2019 to reconcile the percentage of build-out funding assigned to the proposed city housing authority and shared space condominium units at 412 Boulevard of the Allies and to adjust the amount assigned in the AE-7 professional services agreement accordingly. Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith presents Bill 2118, Resolution Granting onto Squirrel Hill Urban Coalition, their successor, and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own expense six tree pits along with five benches at 2136 through 2144 Murray Avenue. Bill 2119, Resolution Granting onto RMU Properties, their successors assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense an ADA entrance ramp at 3601 Penn Avenue. Bill 2120, Resolution Granting Desmond Architects, their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct and maintain and use at their own cost and expense for an entrance stair and 10 planters at 3629 Mintwood Street. Bill 2121, Resolution Granting Jason Regan, their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a new feature wall with a bench and a canopy at 3611 Mintwood Street. Councilwoman Erica Strausberger presents Bill 2122, Resolution Amending Resolution 469 of 2018 which authorized the Mayor and the Director of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional service agreement and/or amendments with Planet Technologies for a Software-as-a-Service email and data file collaboration, including increasing the authorized contract amount by $47,580 for active directory modernization services. Councilman Bruce A. Kraus presents Bill 2123, Communication from the City Controller Michael Lamb submitting a performance audit of the Department of Finance Treasurer's Office Division Property Sales dated September 2019. This concludes the reading for today, Tuesday, October 1st, 2019. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of Pittsburgh City Council for today, Tuesday, October 1st, 2019. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mrs. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Lovell.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Here.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and we ask that you would please remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You may be seated. Congressman, would you join me on the dais, please? So we have a very special proclamation this morning and a very special guest here in council chambers to deliver the proclamation. I believe you have some guests that we could invite up as well?
Yeah, well, we want to invite Dr. Moriarty up here for the presentation.
Please come up. Thanks, Dr. Moriarty. And Congressman, I'll give that to you.
Thank you, Bruce. You know, my wife and I were raising kids in the '70s. They're grown kids now. But we'll never forget, in the '70s, the Mr. Yuck campaign. And on every bottle of whatever that we didn't want our children to get into, we had those green stickers on there. And we used to sing to the kids, the old jingle, you know, "Mr. Yuck is mean, Mr. Yuck is green." And I never knew that it was a Pittsburgher that was responsible for all this. Dr. Moriarty grew up in Lawrenceville and went to the University of Pittsburgh School of Medicine, and he started the Pittsburgh Poison Control Center in 1971, and then the National Poison Center in 1973. And he's best known for his Mr. Yuck campaign, which went nationwide. And I think every parent that raised children, you know, knows about that green sticker. And it was such a neat idea because the kids immediately identified it with something they wanted to stay away from. And it's no surprise, once again, that a NADA of Pittsburgh has done something to help the entire country. He's not only done that, he's had a distinguished medical career, too. So, Dr. Moriarty gives me great pleasure, and by the way, today is his birthday. Is that right? Two days, two days. I'm not going to say his age, but he looks a heck of a lot younger than his birthday, okay? Just, he's going to be 80 years old. So, God bless you. So, Doctor, it gives me great pleasure, on behalf of the Congress of the United States and the U.S. House of Representatives, to present you with this Congressional Proclamation honoring you for your years of great service, not only to Pittsburgh, but to our entire country and the young children all across. You know, you can't count how many lives were saved because of this green sticker on people's bodies. So thank you so much and proud to know you're a Pittsburgher, and thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you.
Want to take a few words?
Believe it or not, as an Irishman, I'm almost speechless. But not quite. My mother always said, "Give me my flowers while I'm alive, not when I'm dead." And that's what Chiesa are doing. Thank you.
I understand that the doctor is going to take a photograph. So, Dr. Moriarty, it is also with great pleasure that I present this proclamation from the City of Pittsburgh to you as well, honoring you for the work that you've done and to celebrate your anniversary. And so, again, with great pleasure, we offer this to you as well, and thank you.
My pleasure, thank you. I understand that the doctor has a number of invited guests here. Anybody wearing that green sticker? Would you like to come up and join us? We're going to take a photograph for prosperity, and could we have all members of the council as well, too, to come up? Why don't we do it?
You see the guy coming up in the hockey?
Yes.
He plays for the mighty Yucks.
He plays for the mighty Yucks. Well, we need to bring him up. Why don't we take the photograph up here on the dais? We'll put the doctor and the congressman in the middle, and maybe Mr. Yuck here as well, and we'll take a good photograph.
We have to go on ours.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Will you come up, please?
You see the guy in the hockey?
Yeah.
He plays for the mighty Yucks.
That's a real team, huh?
Yeah, that's a real team.
We won on Sunday.
Did you?
Great.
Where's your family? Get your family up here next to you.
So, my family's all Virginia. They're coming up on Thursday.
These are all friends?
Yeah.
Wow. That's impressive.
Yeah, these are all friends.
Yeah. Yeah.
Here we are.
This is great. We're good if you work.
Come on, get up here. Come on, come on, get up here.
Is that everybody?
I hope we have everybody. We need a squish together.
Need a wide-angle lens.
Get your patient taken.
Okay. All right, that will be for the Christmas card.
Congratulations. Again, thank you. Nice to meet you.
Congratulations. All right. Thank you. Nice to meet you. All right. Thank you. Congratulations. 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 All right. Thank you.
...to be there, and those individuals were not very happy with me. But I said, hey, if Steve rats me out, I'm safe. So this is, again, something well deserved, and as a Pittsburgher, I'm very proud that you're here today. Whereas, born in Connecticut in April 1942, Steve Blas spent his entire career with the Pittsburgh Pirates. As a player, a broadcast announcer, signed in 1960, Steve Blas made his major league debut with the Bucks in 1964 and joined the team permanently in 1966. And whereas Steve won 18 games in 1968, including a 2.12 ERA with seven shutouts, both career highs, finished the season very strong by winning the NL Player of the Month in September of that year with a 5-1 record, a 1.65 ERA, and 46 strikeouts. In 1969, he won 16 games with a career-high 147 strikeouts, and from 1969 to 72, he won 60 games with another career-high victory of 19 in 1972. In that season, he made the NL All-Star Team and was runner-up in the National League Cy Young Award. And whereas, in the 1971 World Series against the Baltimore Orioles, won by the Pittsburgh Pirates in seven games, Blas pitched two complete game wins, allowing only seven hits and two runs in 18 innings, and was the winning pitcher in the Game Seven win in Baltimore. He finished second in the voting for World Series MVP behind his good friend Roberto Clemente. Whereas, in 1983, Steve joined the Pirates TV and radio broadcast team as a primetime color commentator, taking on a full-time position in 1986. Oh, wait, I'm so sorry, Teresa. You're supposed to be up here. I didn't know where you were.
I was gonna hurt you afterwards.
Oh, sorry, I'm so sorry. Teresa and I sponsored this because Steve actually lives in her district. So it's my fault.
That's all I know about him.
Where was I? Okay. Announcing his retirement, January 2019, Steve was officially, has officially retired over the past weekend. He will stay involved with the Pirates as an alumni ambassador and plans to play a lot of golf, which he's pretty good at, and he travels, and he wants to travel with his wife, Karen, and watch his grandson pitch, Chris, pitch for Upper St. Clair High School. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and commend the extraordinary career of Pittsburgh Pirate Steve Blas, congratulates him on 60 remarkable years, and wishes him good times in his retirement. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, October 1st, 2019, to be Steve Blas Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
We have a motion in a second, please. All in favor?
Aye. I'm just gonna be real brief. My husband wants one of these bobblehead dolls, I just want to say. But he was so impressed, I want to thank Councilwoman O'Connor for including me in this proclamation. We were, I'm so impressed and so thrilled to learn a lot more about you, but I was mostly thrilled to learn that you were a resident of District Two, because that is something we can really hold on to and be so proud of. We are so proud of it. So as soon as I posted something about it, and you living in Mount Washington, everybody's like, he lives here? He lives here? So everybody was so impressed. So I just want to thank you for your commitment to the City of Pittsburgh, the Pirates, but especially for your residency in District Two.
Thanks so much. Thank you. Thank you very much. So we've got a lot of ground to cover, but as Elizabeth Taylor told each one of her eight husbands, don't worry, I won't keep you long. What about the crowd that Dr. Moriarty pulled in? I'll tell ya, that's bigger than some of the crowds back in Forbes Field. But this, this means a great deal to me, because this city and the people in this city mean a great deal to me. I've been so proud to represent them in some small way with the Pittsburgh Pirates, because we moved here in 1972, and we were made to feel so welcome coming from Connecticut, and that has never changed. In the grocery stores, the gas stations, the restaurants, the people have so, been so kind to all of us. So it means a lot, and to, you know, to be a teammate of Roberto Clemente, and Maz, and Stargill, and go through all we went through and win this thing, so proud. Just a quick, a quick note, I'm also very proud to be a member of a group of retired athletes in this city, the football players, the hockey players, the baseball players that have stayed here and have been involved in the community, giving back to the community. It sounds like a cliche, but it's accurate. I've been involved with Junior Achievement, and ALS, the Lou Gehrig Disease, Family Hospice, and some other things, and we can't do enough. And I think it's important for us to realize as former athletes, pro athletes, that we can get in some doors, maybe other people can't, and that's a responsibility that, shame on us if we don't do those things. So again, I can't thank you enough, I'm so proud of this group of people that I live with, and Noah, and Christopher Parker, and Karen. Karen, who's been with me for 66 years of marriage plus four years of bad behavior in high school. She's been there every day and every night, and now it's time for me, it's my turn for, for me to be there for her. So we're so proud. We're not going anywhere, we're Pittsburghers, and we love Mount Washington. My goodness, there's something beautiful to look at all the time, day and night, even at night, the city lights up in all kinds of colors. So we're here for the long haul.
We're fixing Grandview.
Yes, pardon?
I said, we're fixing Grandview.
Oh, we're fixing Grandview. Grandview Avenue, and Shaler? Shaler Street? Oh, boy. We were gonna stay before that. I know you have much to do, but thanks so much. You make me and our family feel like a million bucks, and we're gonna enjoy all this. Thanks so much.
We have all members, I know, all members for a pic.
Come on, everybody, Frenchy.
Oh, you're a baseball guy. Come on up.
Chris.
How about Missy?
Everybody's Frenchy.
Yeah, look who I'm standing next to, wanna step?
You want me to step down?
No, no, don't.
There we are.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Been a good run, wonderful. Nobody stays with one outfit for seven years anymore?
No, no, no.
It's true.
It was a pleasure meeting you.
Thank you, John.
I never know when to, when.
Yeah.
Councilwoman, you have a proc to present, Councilwoman Smith?
Okay.
Sure.
It's a pleasure.
Councilwoman Smith, you have a proc to present, correct?
Wait one second.
Mm-hmm.
You know what? Dr. Miller's our best.
Hey.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, good morning, Councilwoman.
I'm gonna ask all of the members of council if they'd like to come up and present this proc with me. Would the folks from Save Darfur please come forward?
Please come up.
The Pittsburgh Darfur Emergency Coalition. Yeah, yeah. Could everybody come up?
After you read it, or not?
No, just come up with me. This is important. I mean, if you don't want to, you don't have to. Hi, how are you?
Morning.
And I just want to say, one of the first things I was asked was to make sure we included all council members in the mayor's office. Oh, Pastor Carver, so good to see you. And that, oh, and that, that we make sure that this is not something where we play politics, but we all support collectively. And so anybody who'd like to come up, we'd like to have you up here. I think, is this in your district, this event?
It is.
East Liberty. You want to come up then?
That's okay, I'm here.
I'm sorry. Okay, so, anyway, I think we, I got involved with this a long time ago when Pastor Carver from Crafton Heights United Presbyterian Church asked me to get involved a little bit. And that was, I think it was before it was elected, right? Was it? Yeah, it was a long time. He's been working on this for a very long time. And so I got involved then, and since then, we try to do whatever we can as a council to support your efforts, and we thank you so much for raising such awareness and making such change. Whereas, the Pittsburgh Darfur Emergency Coalition, PDEC, is hosting its seventh annual luncheon and forum on the problems of Sudan and South Sudan. This year, on Sunday, October 13th, 2019, from 1:30 to 4:00 p.m. at East Liberty Presbyterian Church, co-sponsored by the International Partnership of the Pittsburgh Presbyterian. And whereas, Pittsburgh is home of many refugee families and individuals from Sudan and South Sudan. These new citizens continue to hope for the peace and prosperity of their country of origin while contributing to life here in the Pittsburgh, in the city of Pittsburgh. And whereas, Pittsburghers and city council particularly have historically supported U.S. engagement through diplomatic efforts to bring about peace with justice in the two Sudanis. And whereas, mass street protests in Sudan recently succeeded at great cost of life in overthrowing accused genocide perpetrator Omar al-Bashir, and setting in motion in agreement to bring about the transition to civilian rule. And whereas, the U.S. State Department has appointed Ambassador Donald Booth as a special envoy to work in support of those goals. And whereas, the City of Pittsburgh salutes the courage and overwhelmingly nonviolent method, method of the civilian opposition in Sudan, and applauds the engagement of the U.S. State Department and Special Envoy Booth in conjunction with the international partners to advance the program of peaceful transition to civilian rule. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend the Pittsburgh Darfur Emergency Coalition for organizing rallies, marches, petitions, letter-writing campaigns, and bringing issues of human rights concerns before council and the community for over 15 years. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Sunday, October 13th, 2019, to be Pittsburgh Darfor Emergency Coalition Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. Councilwoman may have a motion in a second, please.
Don't move.
All in favor? All right, motion passes. Thank you so very much.
We'll hear from some of the folks from the coalition, and then we'll hear from council members and take the vote.
All right, thank you, thank you, Councilwoman Kale Smith. And I'd like to introduce a young man who's a refugee here in Pittsburgh with his family. He attends Bashir High School, and it shows that what a welcoming city Pittsburgh is to refugees, and then we'll talk a little bit about how Pittsburgh has reached out and extended its interest to, to what's going on in Sudan and South Sudan.
You were smart, you wrote down your comments, I didn't.
My name is Mazimel, I'm from Sudan Darfur. I'm 15 years old. I have, I have seven brothers, I have three older than me, four younger than me. We come with my mother. I lost my father when I was 10. And we live, we live in Khamen Chat. We live, we live, we have no, we have no home, but we live in Khamen Chat. We, in Khamen Chat. I never saw my home in Darfur, I never know my home in Darfur, but to come, I have, I have school to go, I go to Bashir High School. I have a dream, and my brother and I have better future. I'd like to say thank you, Yose, and Pittsburgh.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to mention the stalwart members of the Pittsburgh Darfor Emergency Coalition. As the proclamation, proclamation reads, we were, been in existence for 15 years. Hardly, hardly seems like anything could have lasted that long, you know, but Pittsburgh City Council was, was really involved with our efforts right from the start. We were founded in August of 2004, and within two weeks, City Council had passed a proclamation sponsored by Council, Councilman Sala Houdin at the time. And it went on from there to, to many forms, many different forms of engagement. I remember, I remember some of the people here, including Councilwoman Harris, took part in marches that we had, we had postcard campaigns. Pittsburgh was the sixth city in the United States to divest its holdings in stocks that supported genocide in Sudan. The city pension board, with the encouragement of Pittsburgh City Council, divested. And then there was a notable case where six members of Pittsburgh City Council signed a letter to then Secretary of State Hillary Clinton, asking for attention to be paid to a Sudanese activist, a Darfur activist woman, who was, who was imprisoned and tortured in Artum. And as a result of council's efforts, Congressman Doyle's efforts, and the efforts of our U.S. senators, she was freed, Hawa Saleh was freed within three weeks of this particular campaign. And she came before Pittsburgh City Council and expressed her gratitude for the efforts council had extended to obtain her liberation from, from the national security system of the Sudanese government. So now we're at a point where there's been a revolution in Sudan, although the attention to this particular part of the world has, has shifted. We held big marches in Pittsburgh from about 2004 to 2010, but the marches tapered off and people, people started paying less attention as time wore on. But a few of us hung in there because we felt we were still being effective, and we, we created instead a forum, an annual forum at East Liberty Presbyterian Church with support from the International Partnership of the Pittsburgh Presbyterian. And each year, we have a forum in which we discuss, bring guests in to discuss the situation in Sudan and South Sudan. And we're looking forward to this year's forum on October 13th, and hope that members of council who will plan to attend, Congressman Doyle, will be honored for his commitment at this meeting and plans to come and, and deliver a statement. I'd like to just recognize a few members of my, of the Pittsburgh Darfor Emergency Coalition who have hung in there for lo these many years. Mary, Dr. Mary Dawn Edwards.
Could you answer people?
Yeah. Dr. Edwards has been with this Pittsburgh Darfor Emergency Coalition for 15 years. Karen Teeman, a member of the, of a church in Monroeville, the Crossroads Presbyterian Church, who has also been very engaged. Kosar Albe, from South Sudan herself, member of Diaspora, member of, of our coalition, and wonderful cook in, in the bargain. She'll be preparing a light luncheon at the, at the forum on October 13th. Ismail Omar, refugee from Darfur, who's been constantly helpful and, and is making his way with his son in Pittsburgh. And Peta Harrington Cole, a member of the Peace Committee of the East Liberty Presbyterian Church, Reverend Carver. And I think that about covers the ground.
Resident of District Two.
What?
Resident of District Two.
Resident of District Two, okay. Well, thank you very much, council. You've been engaged from the beginning, and hope you will, we appreciate your continued support, and hope you will continue to pay attention to events across the ocean. Everybody marched with us to protest against the genocidal actions of Omar al-Bashir. Well, now he's been overthrown, he's in jail, but Sudan must struggle to find a peaceful transition from civilian rule, from military rule, rather, to civilian rule. Let's cross our fingers and hope that they succeed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want members for the photograph?
Do members want to come up for the photograph? If anyone wants to say anything, you can come up.
May we have members for the photograph, please?
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for all your work. Did you mention how people can get involved other than this event? Is there any other way they can get involved?
Oh, I didn't. We have a Facebook page.
Okay, yeah, you want to tell people that?
Yeah. Not too many people here.
No, it's televised.
Oh, okay, okay. We do have a Facebook page if you're interested in getting involved. Pittsburgh Darfor is our Facebook address. Please check it out, and we'd like to, we'd like to increase our involvement and have you involved at a critical moment here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that yours?
No, somebody tried to.
Okay, yes, uh-huh. We have one more to be read by, or presented, I'm sorry, by Councilwoman Strasburger.
Would everyone here for Zero Evictions Day? Come on up.
Welcome, good morning.
So this is part of an effort to draw attention to Zero, Zero Evictions Campaign through the month of October, calling for global actions all throughout the month. Whereas, in 2018, 14,181 eviction court actions, the highest in a decade, were filed by landlords against Allegheny County residents. And between 2014 and 2016, Allegheny County saw 40,000 eviction filings. And whereas, Pittsburgh continues to see a gap of nearly 20,000 affordable housing units, and residents' experiences reflect a global housing crisis that is producing similar impacts on cities and communities around the world. And whereas, housing insecurity and evictions have the most harmful effects on our community's most vulnerable residents, especially children, senior citizens, women, and low-income residents. And whereas, housing insecurity disproportionately affects African-American households and other minority groups, contrary to the U.S. government's obligations under the Convention on the Elimination of All Forms of Racial Discrimination. And whereas, 71% of Pittsburgh families living in poverty are headed by single women and more subject to housing insecurity. Whereas, in 2011, Pittsburgh became the fifth city in the United States to proclaim itself a human rights city, promising to, quote, "to provide leadership and advocacy to secure, protect, and promote human rights for all people." And whereas, in 2016, Pittsburgh became the sixth city in the United States to pass legislation implementing the International Convention on the Elimination of All Forms of Discrimination Against Women, promising to work to overcome discrimination and promote access to safe and affordable housing and transportation. Whereas, the United Nations calls for concrete steps to achieve adequate housing for all by 2030 by re-establishing housing as a social good and preventing the excessive accumulation of wealth. Whereas, the International Alliance of Inhabitants launched a Zero Evictions Campaign to promote international solidarity to achieve dignity and security in housing, calling for global actions this October. And whereas, a diverse array of Pittsburgh and Allegheny County residents have come together to build a housing justice movement in our region that will center human rights and housing policies and advance human rights and dignity for all residents. And whereas, Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh City Council has begun to take important steps to address the city's housing crisis, including the establishment of the Housing Opportunity Fund and recent inclusionary zoning legislation. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby affirm its commitment to the human right to housing, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare October 1st, 2019, to be Zero Evictions Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
Second.
All in favor? All right, motion passes. Thank you very much for your work.
Now, I know every single member of council has, has worked on housing or housing shortage issues in some capacity or another, so I'm happy to open it up to any kind of comments anyone wants to make, but first I wanted to, and eventually bring everyone up for a photo, but I wanted to turn it over to Megan Stanley from the Commission on Human Relations. Can I try to talk into this mic properly? So, yeah, thank you, Councilperson Strasburger and all members of council for supporting this. I don't think I need to tell anybody here that eviction is a huge problem in our country and in Pittsburgh particularly. We all know the affordable housing crisis that is affecting so many residents of Pittsburgh. Eviction does not just impact somebody's housing, it is a disruptive process that can take children out of a school district, it can disrupt employment, and it can disconnect people from their social networks and social capital. So it is a huge problem. Having the proclamation today is the first step. I look forward to meeting with all of you individually to talk about actual policies we can put in place to end unlawful evictions, to reduce the number of eviction filings, and to create more affordable housing in Pittsburgh. Thank you.
Good morning. I don't really have a lot to say. I just thank the members of council and Councilperson Strasburger for recognizing the Zero Evictions Campaign, which is a global campaign, and thinking about direct action in this city and what that looks like. I know we have walked together and made many strides here at council, being brave and courageous together. I look forward to continuing that. I stand here as a person who, before I worked for Pittsburgh United, was street homeless. And I know what it means to have a stable home, and to be stabilized, and to have safe, quality, affordable housing, and to do things that prevent evictions, such as just cause eviction, and looking at things like rent control. So I hope that we continue this walk to get to zero evictions forever for people in the city of Pittsburgh, in the state of Pennsylvania, nationally and globally. And I thank you for being brave and courageous with us as we are out in these streets. Many people are not here because 24/7 we're answering phones. We're out here trying to really prevent evictions for people that are going through many harmful things. So I just wanted to say thank you for recognizing that evictions are a scourge and that we want to prevent them and stop them from happening. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to invite all members of council and anyone else to attend a noon press conference right out here on this exact topic. So if we could get all members up for a photo, that would be, that would be great.
Now, I know every single member of Council has, has worked on housing or housing shortage issues in some capacity or another, so I'm happy to open it up to any kind of comments anyone wants to make, but first I wanted to, and eventually bring everyone up for a photo, but I wanted to turn it over to Megan Stanley from the Commission on Human Relations. Can I try to talk into this mic properly? So, yeah. Thank you, Councilperson Strasburger and all members of Council for supporting this. I don't think I need to tell anybody here that eviction is a huge problem in our country and in Pittsburgh particularly. We all know the affordable housing crisis that is affecting so many residents of Pittsburgh. Eviction does not just impact somebody's housing. It is a disruptive process that can take children out of a school district, it can disrupt employment, and it can disconnect people from their social networks and social capital. So it is a huge problem. Having the proclamation today is the first step. I look forward to meeting with all of you individually to talk about actual policies we can put in place to end unlawful evictions, to reduce the number of eviction filings, and to create more affordable housing in Pittsburgh. Thank you.
I don't really have a lot to say. I just thank the members of Council and Councilperson Strasburger for recognizing the Zero Evictions Campaign, which is a global campaign, and thinking about direct action in this city and what that looks like. I know we have walked together and made many strides here at Council, being brave and courageous together. I look forward to continuing that. I stand here as a person who, before I worked for Pittsburgh United, was street homeless. And I know what it means to have a stable home and to be stabilized and to have safe, quality, affordable housing, and to do things that prevent evictions, such as just cause eviction and looking at things like rent control. So I hope that we continue this walk to get to zero evictions forever for people in the City of Pittsburgh, in the state of Pennsylvania, nationally and globally. And I thank you for being brave and courageous with us as we are out in these streets. Many people are not here because 24/7 we're answering phones. We're out here trying to really prevent evictions for people that are going through many harmful things. So I just wanted to say thank you for recognizing that evictions are a scourge and that we want to prevent them and stop them from happening. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to invite all members of Council and anyone else to attend a noon press conference right out here on this exact topic. So if we could get all members up for a photo, that would be, that would be great.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City does hereby recognize the important contributions of Alma Burgess to the Pittsburgh community, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City does hereby declare Saturday, September 28, 2019, to be Alma Burgess' 100th birthday day in the city.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, just as a matter of formality, since we only presented the proclamation to Dr. Moriarty, can we just read the last paragraph and we'll take an official vote on it as well, please?
Council President Kraus present. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare the day of October 1st, 2019, to be Mr. Yuck Day in the City of Pittsburgh, and recognizes Dr. Moriarty for his extraordinary efforts to promote the safety of children in our region.
Thank you. May I have a motion in a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good. Motion passes. Thank you all very much. That concludes the proclamation portion of the council meeting and takes us into public comment. Anyone wishing to speak before City Council this morning, of course, will have three minutes in which to do so. I would like to remind everyone here wanting to speak that our rules of council are clear when they state that comment is limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are at this time or could at another time come before this council. We will not permit profanity. We will maintain order at all times. I ask that you please begin by giving your name and the neighborhood in which you reside for our public record. The green light will indicate the start of your three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you'll have one minute to summarize your thoughts. When the red light comes on, your time will have expired. Good morning, Joy, welcome.
Hi there. This is Joy Sabel of Pointe Brise. And I want to point out that one of the wonderful things about Mr. Yuck is the sheer graphical simplicity that takes a complex, dangerous situation and makes it safe. And I want to bring to your notice a situation where we take something that should be simple and make it difficult and unsafe. And I am speaking of our towing and parking and towing policies. This is the citation in the form that it looked less than four days after I received. As you can see, it is essentially blank because less than four days of wind and rain wipes out all information. At that point, even if you, the tow pound tells you what district it was, the police, the right police district, you called them, they say, "It's not in our database anymore once it's towed. You have to talk to Parking Court." You call Parking Court and they tell you that if you do not have a visible citation number, it will be at least six weeks and possibly two months before that information enters their computer system. And if you miss that notification, oh, don't worry, it'll be a few months before it becomes a bench warrant. The idea that something can become an arrestable offense, especially in this case, I was in Europe, I left my car with a friend along with a proper notarized statement and all documentation, as I do when I am out of the country. She had to go out of state. So with less than 48 hours, the notices go up, the key is with her, that's not enough time even to FedEx the key back home. So therefore the car gets towed because of PWSA work. I have some suggestions. Number one, there are many ways to write that will remain visible, including the lead pencil or rather the regular pencil. If a copy of the citation number were written, that would cover the problem. Secondly, it is policy that towers can only take to the tow pound. They can't move the car 50 feet or across the street. This is supposed to stop people from taking money as a bribe on the side. However, you could legislate that if PWSA needs to move a car, they can move it line of sight or across the street and put it back down again. So, anyway, this is a situation that is unnecessarily complex, verging on dangerous. And, you know, frankly, if my bananas can be tracked, and if my apples can be tracked, and my remaining lettuce can be tracked, I do not see why a car that has a license plate, a VIN number, a registered owner cannot be tracked in less than six weeks. Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Good morning. I have a neighbor who at least for five years has had.
That's okay. Ma'am, thank you. I can chair the meeting. Thank you. Ma'am, I need you to come up and give your name and the neighborhood in which you reside, please.
All right. I, my, hold on just a minute.
Aye.
My name is Dixie Timmons. I live on Wallingford Street, right on the borderline of Oakland and Shady Side. I have a neighbor who has had a sign at least for five years in her front yard saying, "Fracking poisons air and water." Now we know that fracking also causes earthquakes where there have never been. I just read another story where fracking, if you live, if you are pregnant, and if you live within 10, a 10-mile radius of the fracking, your child is in danger, the child that you are giving birth to. So, last time I started to talk about all of this, I, there was a guest talking at the other council, and it was Mr. Fitzgerald, and he was loudly applauded and praised. Well, I had just gotten this in a thing. It says Fitzgerald is emcee for Consol's Airport Levin. Some of you may not be of the hoi polloi. We, the people, are, maybe you are too, but admission for this was by invitation only. Then you were taken to a van to the party venue at a console well pad. Friendly media were on hand to record the festivities. Ordinary citizens were nowhere to be seen or heard. Such was the official public kickoff of fracking at Pittsburgh International Airport. And County Executive Rich Fitzgerald was the host for the event. He went on to say about the greening it was and to praise that this was a new age for this city and county. None of the people, by the way, at the airport had any of that to say. One other thing, and I'll keep talking till this goes on. A young woman named Greta Thunberg, you've probably seen her on television, less than a year ago, she was unknown, she was a 15-year-old, would spend her Fridays alone on the steps of the Swedish Parliament protesting her government's lack of action on climate change. And she said, "It began to build and build, now it is worldwide." She said to them, "The eyes of all future generations are upon you, and if you choose to fail us, I say we will never forgive you." Well, we have had a young lady, Climate Justice Now, 18, who has built a following, a weekly Friday vigil in downtown.
Thank you very much.
And she is doing the same thing.
Yes, thank you very much.
I guess that's it.
Yep.
All right, I'll be back next week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're always welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I hope so.
May I have the next speaker, please? Good morning, Ms. Brown.
You have to excuse me because you know what?
May we have your name for the record, please?
My name, my name is Yvonne F. Brown.
Thank you.
Hmm. I'm looking at you like you look at me. But Mr. Lavelle, Mrs. Lavelle, you smiling because you know he's evil as hell when he looks at me. It looks like the devil jumps in him. But you know what? God, you see this? God's eyes is watching everything. And when he watches Kraus, you better look, you better think about when you hollered at me in front of my grandchildren, because what did Jesus say? "Suffer, little children." And you made my children suffer. You hollering at Grandma, and you were wrong 100 percent. I get three minutes, 20-something years, and he takes it and cuts it down to one minute and 30 seconds, because him and Vic from the ACLU is targeting me. Ain't that what you said, Ms. Harris? Didn't you say they are targeting Mr. Yvonne Brown? And he did. He cut my time down to a minute and 30 seconds. Now, I'm upset because of Mr. Lavelle. You need to look up there, Oak Hill. They're putting them young ladies out. And Lavelle, um, fatigue, he's letting it go, but someone said, he just say, "Wait a minute, I'm gonna have to look at this," because in some kind of way, they're supposed to be able to pay 25, and they're charging them $150. Please look into it, because they're putting a lot of them young girls out. Plus, red alert. Where I live at, Kayleigh, we're nervous, there's a pole. Now, I'm digging up the dirt and stuff. The white lady live across the street, young lady, brought me a spade to help me, because they're glad we're getting them weeds done. But she said, "Look at this pole. It's out of compliance." Do you know that the citizens that are in the wheelchair have to ride down moister they can't get past, especially the large one? Now, yesterday, there was a white man I've never seen before, he's paraplegic, and he comes down and gets down to that pole down there, and it stops, and it gets hooked up in some kind of way he did it, and he was able to go over it. He almost fell. I told him, "I'm going to Mr. Lavelle and the mayor, Pedudo. Instead of making them sidewalks for them to sit outside the bars and rotels, hotels or whatever and drink, come up here and help the seniors, because there's no way they have to ride down the street." I didn't realize it. I didn't realize it until I seen it. Yes, you, Mr. Lavelle, I usually give you hell, but I'm gonna praise you because you spoke up for them women, because you and all you believe, it had been two black men on top of a white woman. You better believe somebody would have stopped. If I had been there and they jumped on, I would have went. I'm telling you. You bring these foreigners in. They're foreigners, they're domestic terrorists. Where's Trump when we need him? Ha, where are you? Send them back home. Send them back home. They even changed your name to take out an English name.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
They even used your own name.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. May we have our next speaker, please? Good morning, Dr. Miller.
Dr. Ronaldin Miller, Beltou, around East Liberty. Global Intelligence Society candidate for president 2020. I'm from Pittsburgh, to use a Pittsburgh-y's expression, born and bred, not like Steve Blass. The key foci of what I'm doing has to do with the security of the vote and of citizen speech, which is crucial to our democracy. A concern of City Council is the U.S. Constitution Amendment, one on freedom of speech, and one DR, District Representative responsibility, is to listen to citizen's speech during public comment. But suppose you DRs don't want to listen to citizens generally or specific citizens specifically. From publicly recorded TV actions in your, in your actions as public officials, one, you worship your mobiles, Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor often do this. Two, you talk to another district representative at council tables, as Ms. Gross, Mr. Kraus, Ms. Kayla Smith have done. Three, you talk softly to another citizen elsewhere in the council room, as Ms. Harris, Ms. Kayla Smith, Mr. Burgess have done. You talk to another citizen close to the speaker loudly, as Ms. Gross did to me in 2016. Is this civil or uncivil? Ms. Gross has not apologized for this. Is this gutsy or grimy? You leave before public comment, as Ms. Gross did last week, 26 September 2019. Is this courageous or is this cowardly? Six, you enter the meeting late after, after public comment, as Ms. Gross often does. Seven, you stay for public, for proclamations, then leave before the public comment, as Ms. Gross did last week. Is this clever or is it capricious? You absent yourself from meetings or come to meetings late? This is Ms. Gross's overwhelming public pattern. This is not a criticism of you in your private life. You may be perfect. I assume that that is true of all of you. This is public actions. And therefore, my view, our view is that District 7, Ms. Gross, shows the least respect for citizen's speech of all Pittsburgh council legislators. She's missed more council meetings and therefore avoids public comments more than any other district representative, 2014 to 2019. We have substantial evidence, facts, to do this. This is a general disrespect and manipulated public comment situations to invade the public comment of one citizen myself. She is behaving, in my view, like a public, like a sixth grader, a political dinosaur, Pittsburgh DP, Democratic Party born and Pedudo bred.
Thanks, Dr. Miller. May we have our next speaker, please? Our next speaker, please? Okay, seeing no further speakers, we'll close the public comment portion of the council meeting. We'll go into presentation of papers and begin with Councilman Burgess, our Chair of Finance and Law. Thank you, Councilmen.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 2109, Resolution Amending Resolution 762, which authorizes the Director of Finance to enter into a contract or agreement with the Pittsburgh Community Reinvestment Group for the purpose of annual analysis of community reinvestment of possible city depositories and other associated work. The contract period was originally November 1st to November 31st, 2018, renewable annually for up to three years by mutual agreement of the parties at $25,000 for each year of service. Bill Number 2110, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 855, adopting and approving the 2012 capital budget and the 2012 CDBG program by reducing Children's Museum by $4,000 and increasing Women's Center and Shelter by $4,000, and authorizing a subsequent agreement for the operation, administrative expenses, maintenance, purchase of equipment, and/or rehabilitation of neighborhood facilities on behalf of the residents of the city. Bill Number 2111, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 797, by reducing CDBG personnel by $10,000 and increasing Women's Center and Shelter by $10,000, and authorizing a subsequent agreement for operation administrative expenses, maintenance, purchase of equipment, and/or rehabilitation of neighborhood facilities on behalf of the residents.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Coghill, our Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmen. Councilwoman Gross, our Chair of Land Use and Economic Development. Councilman Coghill for Councilwoman Gross. Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 2112, Resolution Providing for the Pittsburgh City Council to authorize the mayor to execute all necessary agreements between the city and the Pennsylvania State Historic Preservation Office as may be required for renewed participation in the certified local government program. Bill Number 2113, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 534, entitled, Resolution Providing for Agreements and/or Contracts with Urban Design Ventures for the Purpose of Assisting the City in Preparing Environmental Reviews Resulting from an Audit Conducted by the U.S. Department of HUD, and Provide for the Payment at a Cost Thereof Not to Exceed $20,000 by Increasing the Amount Authorized to $48,000.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Harris, our Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, Councilwoman Harris. Councilman Lavelle, our Chair of Public Safety Services. Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 2116, Resolution Providing for the Issuement of a Warrant in Favor of Shallow Creek's Kennel, Inc., in the Amount of $8,000 for the Purchase of One K-9 for the Department of Public Safety Bureau of Police.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman O'Connor, our Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 2117, Resolution Amending Resolution 42, to reconcile the percentage of billed-out funding assigned to the proposed City Housing Authority and Shared Space Condominium Units at 412 Boulevard of the Allies, and to adjust the amounts assigned to the AE-7 Professional Services Agreement accordingly.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman O'Connor.
Uh, the, there is a request to waive the rules from the administration on this bill. It's a motion to waive the rules.
Okay. Motion to waive the rule eight on Bill 2117, so that it may appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee, and a second at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed abstentions, seeing none. 2117 appears on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda. Thank you, Councilmen. Councilwoman Kell Smith, our Chair of Public Work Services.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Kell Smith presents Bill Number 2118, Resolution Granting Unto Squirrel Hill Urban Coalition, Their Successors, and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Costs and Expense, Six Tree Pits Along With Five Benches at 2136 and 2144 Murray Avenue in the Fourteenth Ward, Fifth Council District. Bill Number 2119, Resolution Granting Unto R.M.U. Properties, and Their Successors and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Costs and Expense, in 88 Entrance Ramp at 3601 Penn Avenue in the Sixth Ward, Seventh Council District. Bill Number 2120, Resolution Granting Unto Desmond Architects, Their Successors and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Costs and Expense, for Entrance Stairs at Ten Planters at 3629 Mintwood Street, Sixth Ward, Seventh Council District. Bill Number 2121, Resolution Granting Unto Graceland Reagan, Their Successors and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Costs and Expense, a New Feature Wall with a Bench and Canopy at 3611 Mintwood Street, Sixth Ward, Seventh Council District.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Strasburger, our Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number 2122, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 469, which authorized the mayor and director of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city to enter into a professional services agreement with Planet Technologies for S.A.A.S., email and data file collaboration, increasing the authorized contract amount by $47,580 for active directory modernization services.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The chair has one communication. I'll need a motion to receive and file, please.
Council President Kraus presents Bill Number 2123, Communication from City Controller Michael Lamb, Submitting a Performance Audit of the Department of Finance Treasurer's Office Division Property Sales, dated September 2, 2019.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May I have a motion to receive and file, please?
I'm moved.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, seeing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions? So moved. Our next order of business is reports of committee for final action. We begin with Councilman Burgess, our Chair on the Committee of Finance and Law. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 2105, Reported the Committee on Finance and Law for September 25th, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 2053, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Chief Equity Officer to Enter Into a Professional Service Agreement and/or Contract Between the City of Pittsburgh and the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, in Order to Receive Training and Develop a Racial Equity Toolkit in an Amount Not to Exceed $26,235, subject to appropriation. Bill Number 2054, Resolution Authorizing Issuement of a Warrant in the Amount of $6,234.14 in Favor of James A. Gordon Jr. for Damage to His Park Vehicle Near the Intersection of Birch Lane Street and Bel Air Place from a City DPW Saw Truck on January 18th, 2019.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of these bills under our Committee on Finance and Law. Is there further discussion on either of the bills? And seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills having received then the legally required number of votes have finally passed. Our next committee is our Committee on Public Work Services. Our Chair is Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Kell Smith presents Bill Number 2106, Reported the Committee on Public Works for September 25th, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 2002, Resolution Vacating a Portion of Gatlin Street in the Tenth Ward, Seventh Council District. Bill Number 2056, Resolution Providing for the Issuement of a Warrant in Favor of Civil and Environmental Consultants, Inc., in the Amount of $18,488.46, an Emergency Payment for Production of the Nine Mile Run Wetland Monitoring Report Due to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, in Order to Comply with P.A.D.E.P. Bill Number 2058, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Department of Public Works to Apply for a Grant Fund from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Keystone Communities Program, to Provide for Funding for the Highland Park Pedestrian Tunnel Project, should the grant be awarded by D.C.E.D., authorized to enter into agreement with D.C.E.D. The grant proposal includes an ask of $500,000, with a local match of $682,638.33 to be contributed by the city 2020 capital budget from the park reconstruction line item. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $1,182,638.33 for this stated purpose. Bill Number 2060, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Execute Relevant Agreement to Receive Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation's Automated Red Light Enforcement Program to Replace Traffic Signals on the Intersection of Bigelow Boulevard and Vanyard Street in the North Oakland Neighborhood, and Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $165,000. There is no stated match required. Bill Number 2061, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Enter Into an Agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Multi-Module Transportation Program, should the grant be awarded by D.C.E.D., to Provide Funding for Grandview Avenue Project. The grant proposal includes an ask of $1,848,700, with a local match of $792,300 included in the 2020 City of Pittsburgh's capital budget. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $2,641,000 for this stated purpose.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills under our Committee on Public Work Services. Do we have further discussion? We do, beginning with Councilwoman Gross.
Yeah, so I apologize again for members to, about the Gallatin Street in the Tenth Ward, and I communicated with Councilwoman Smith a little bit about this last week. If you look at the map, this is a street that is, this is Bill 2002.
Got it. Thank you, Councilman.
Okay, got it right. So, this is a street vacation, and it's been giving me pause. I've been trying to reach out to the owners. You know, there are, there are thousand miles of city street. Many of these city streets are really not throughways for anyone, or they were streets where there's not really public impact. But this one gives me pause, because it connects to a set of city steps, and it's at the end of the bluff of Morningside, that if you're on foot, you can go down city steps and then continue on this street, straight down to, from Baker Street down to Butler Street. And so this one has really been giving me pause, and I've been trying to do some more diligence on this, and, and still haven't, you know, been sure that we've reached out to enough of the, the neighborhood to really see what the impacts are, because the way it, it crosses elevation. So I'm gonna motion to recommit on this one, and I apologize for the inconvenience. I know that we've been, I've been saying this week after week, but I, I will strive to, to really contact everyone and tie this up, so that we can be sure that we're not having a negative impact on the neighborhood.
Great.
Thank you.
Offered as a motion to recommit, uh, 2002. Do you have comment before?
Just would say that I apologize to Councilwoman Gross, because I knew this was an issue. And if you recall, last week, I said, hopefully over the week, if she had a concern, that she would be able to address it before then, so I, I should have had that conversation directly with you, but.
Okay.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you. I know it's, it's one of those things where it's just lots of different neighbors. I apologize.
Do you wish to second then, Councilman?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to recommit 2002. Further discussion? Seeing none, roll call on this, Madam Clerk, I believe, on recommittals? Yes, please. May we do roll call?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So 2002 is recommitted. Do we have further discussion on the remaining bills under the Public Work Services Committee, then? Okay, seeing none, then these bills are now ready.
I apologize. Can I just say something about Grandview Avenue?
Sure.
I want to thank the administration again for applying for so many grants for Grandview, and it's my understanding, there's some additional announcements that they may be making, but I would just say that when they talk about Grandview Avenue, some people are saying that it's just the Mount Washington side. It, my conversation with Chief of Staff Gilman this week said, if, there will be work done on the entire stretch of Grandview, including the Duquesne Heights side, but that's something that has, they've been working on for a very long time, and so I don't know all the details, but I know that we are having some meetings about it. And, and the mayor's office had met with the residents probably a few years ago about the whole, the whole stretch of Grandview, and we know that this is a gem, as we just heard Steve Blass talk about, that we need to take care of in the city of Pittsburgh. So I want to thank the mayor for office.
Sure, thank you, Councilwoman.
The mayor and his office for applying for this grant.
Yep, thank you. Okay, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills then, having received, the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Our next committee is our Committee on Land Use and Economic Development. Our Chair is Councilwoman Debra Gross.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 2107, Reported the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for September 25th, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 2027, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Department of City Planning to Apply for a Grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Keystone Communities Program, to Provide Funding for the Sawmill Run Zone Study, Zoning Study, and Should the Grant Be Awarded, Authorized to Enter Into an Agreement with D.C.E.D., the Grant Proposal Includes an Ask of $25,000, with a local match of $100,000 to be contributed by the City of Pittsburgh's 2020 capital budget. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $125,000 for this stated purpose. Bill Number 2055, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter Into an Agreement with the Community-Based Organizations for Community and Economic Development for Planning Assistance in Various Neighborhoods in the City, and Providing Operating Support for These Groups, and Provide for the Payment at a Cost Not to Exceed $700,000.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills under our Land Use and Economic Development Committee. Is there further discussion on either of the bills? Okay, seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called, and those opposed will vote no. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills having received then the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Our final committee of the morning is our Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management. Our Chair is Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number 2108, Reported the Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management for September 25th, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 2062, Resolution Amending Resolution 158, Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter Into an Agreement with Computronics for the Provision of Permitting and Licensing Package at a Cost Not to Exceed $1,480,000 over the next two years.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Per the reading and the title of this bill under our Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management Committee, is there further discussion on the bill? Okay, seeing none, the bill's now ready for final action, and all in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill then, having received the legally required number of votes, is finally passed. Under motions and resolution, the Chair has a few brief meeting announcements. This afternoon at 1:30, we will be hosting a cablecast public hearing on Bill 1995, as it relates to Net Zero Energy. There is also an executive session scheduled today at 3:00 p.m. on Bills 2024 and 2078. Council will meet tomorrow afternoon, Wednesday, October 2nd, at 2:00 p.m. for a council cablecast post-agenda on the Pittsburgh Climate Action Plan, and Councilwoman Strasburger will serve as the Chair. Also next week, due to the Yan Kippur holiday, council will be holding both of our regular